Great, so um just to catch those up who are just joining the recording. You know, we've called our school committee meeting to order on September twenty first at five oh five P M. Most of the items we're discussing tonight regard town meeting warrants and most of these items we've already discussed before. And the first item related to facilities income and being able to use that not just for the particular facility, but for other facilities within our portfolio. And there's language that's highlighted here in the video that I understand is statutory language that we were provided to to put in here. So I know people have lots of places to go. We only have about twenty five minutes of people's time, so if there are other questions or concerns or or points of order on here, you know, please share them. And if not, you guys would welcome a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion.
Go ahead, Chris, make it.
I'm sorry, she missed the question.
Well, I said, go ahead, make it.
I'm I'm moved to.
Hold on, Chris. Ms. Verter.
Michelle, I'm sorry, you're breaking up quite a bit on us.
We can't make out what you're saying. All right, so um.
I'm happy to make a motion that we put the article on the warrant for fall town meeting that pertains to the local acceptance provision for chapter forty, section three, as presented and as reviewed by council and the controller.
Second.
Great, all all in favor will do a roll call vote. Mr. Nixon?
Hi.
Mr. Brady?
Hi.
Ms. Bollnase?
Hi.
Ms. Bergstrom? Oh, you're on mute if you're saying anything. Here votes I. We lost Miss Bergstrom, but we have a motion unanimous. Now she dropped off. Um, and maybe she'll join us again in a moment. Um, so our next item, I'll let Dr. Hackett introduce. It's a new item on here regarding the sped reserve fund.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So this we we were approached by this as we're doing the year end and the town is auditing. Currently, we are we are under audit as was as part of the year end report. Um, and the we do have a balance of the thirty one thousand one hundred and forty three dollars and seventy three cents in our circuit breaker funding from F F by twenty two. So if if you would recall, you recall that we can, we can carry over a balance one year, but we can't carry it over two years. So this balance is a result of a few different items and things that just did not come through. Um, and the town is supportive, town management is supportive of us using this balance to put into free cash and the sped from free cash into the sped reserve fund because it does revert to free cash. I think you might remember we did this in twenty twenty two as well with there have been actually several years going back, I think, like seven or so years with small circuit breaker balances that that we worked with the town just to clean up. And I think that was like around a fifty thousand dollar transfer into the sped reserve fund. So um, I, you know, appreciate the opportunity with town management and their support of doing this. This certainly only helps us that we know we are still um, we're still kind of dealing with some additional sped costs. We haven't heard yet on any additional funding for the fourteen percent tuition increase. Um, that's still in the legislature being discussed as far as I know, the last I heard. So this is, this will be helpful. Um, and I would recommend it.
So this item will do. So um, if folks have any questions or clarifications, I entertain that this time.
I just I want to throw a thought out there that there's been quite a bit of turnover at town meeting. Originally, we set up a special education stabilization fund. We that was in place for maybe four or five years, and then we actually and and tapping into that fund required town meeting approval. Then we actually pivoted towards a sped reserve fund. The mechanics of this are importantly different because no longer do you have to wait until spring or fall town meeting to get the money. You could really do it almost at any time, but now it actually requires select board approval. So I think Dr. Hackett, one thing that'll be really important, and I support this, is to have some language about that in the background to kind of refresh. First of all, there will be long term town meeting members who might have forgotten that we structurally made a change from one thing to the other. And I think we'd be well served if we kind of dug some of that up. And then in addition, of course, explaining what this is about. But I'm in support of it.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Um, I would just say to keep the background on the transition small, but explaining where the money is going now and how we use it to be a little more detailed in the background. Um, because I also don't want to confuse people, Mr. Nixon, by saying, well, we had this and now we have this. Really, all that matters to town meeting would be what we have now and how we're going to use it. So I'm completely supportive of background information. But I think the history of how we got from a stabilization to a reserve fund in too much detail might just be confusing.
No, I appreciate that. I'm not looking for a novel. I just don't want town meeting members to think that in approving this, it means that we go back to them if we ever want to draw on that thirty one thousand dollars because we gave that up a while ago.
Yeah, I agree to that, which is why I think just describing what the reserve fund is and how we use it would be a good background.
I think it's a simple sentence or two.
Like a motion?
I would.
So I move to place on the warrant for fall town meeting, the article as presented transferring thirty one thousand one hundred forty three dollars and seventy three cents from free cash to the special ed reserve fund as presented.
Second.
Excellent. Roll call vote, all in favor. Um, let's see, Mr. Brady. Sorry, Mr. Nixon. I've just shaken things up a little bit. Uh, Mr. Nixon?
Hi.
Ms. Bollnase?
Hi.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Hi.
The chair votes I, so that passes unanimously.
And Mr. Hopcroft, I did, I don't know, I was breaking up if you got my vote on the previous on the first article, which I was in favor of.
Okay, so we'll let the record reflect that to the extent we can that you voted favorably on that. It was unanimous anyway. Uh, but thank you. Um, all right, the next two items are select board articles about solar at Lynch. You know, and and to the best of my knowledge, we've not been invited to co-sponsor these. Uh, but um, but we could certainly if the committee likes, we could vote favorable action. Um, and and I suggest that maybe we could even do them both as a set if if the committee would like to do that unless there's an issue with that. So unless there's discussion, you know, it's really welcome a motion on that. Dr. Hackett, do you have?
Well, I guess I I because we still have all the information, the town doesn't have all the information. Um, and I and I believe the select board is going to be discussing this uh next week. I'm wondering whether or not, because as you know, you can you can vote favorable action at any point up and up to the town meeting. Uh, I'm wondering if um in the absence of of cosponsoring, uh, maybe it would make sense to wait and let this play out a little bit for him when you have more information and then then you can put it back on the agenda and decide whether or not you want to vote favorable action.
Great, that's a great suggestion. Now, Mr. Brady?
Yeah, I just I totally agree with the superintendent. I'm I'm not inclined to vote on this tonight without more information.
Very well. So do we have a consensus of the committee to um hold off on this until later meeting prior to fall town meeting?
I'm in support of that as well.
I do. Can I just offer just to react to Mr. Brady's comment? So um select um, who is who's we've engaged with on a couple of PPAs in town. Uh, we've been waiting on information for them for quite some time. They actually did email um, another round of analysis that arrived, I think, at twelve forty seven in the morning yesterday. So that is being digested. That did go to management. And I think few other people, um, and even that latest round has generated some further questions. So lots of work continues, but um, I'm I'm not sure it's totally clear yet that the select board has all the information they're asking for.
Great. So we'll we'll table this till a later meeting then. Um, all right, um. What's one saying something? Um, all right, so uh to the enrollment and demographic study and Dr. Hackett, I think you were suggesting an alternate funding source. Uh, you know, here, did you want to speak to that or?
Well, this is part of your discussion, actually, and I think a couple of you actually mentioned it. If if we could figure out a way to within either the budget or I, as I suggest here, Esther, we could explore S R three funding or alternative funds, uh, which could be including the revolving rental revolving account. Uh, if we could do that and 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 pay for an enrollment study with with those kinds of that we wouldn't have to wait. We get early to start on getting getting the enrollment uh, study done, which I think would be very helpful as we really were not too far away, believe it or not, from going into the FY twenty five budget process. And I think as we think about facilities and districting and Lynch opening, uh, just having a sense for what our enrollment looks like sooner rather than later, I think would be helpful.
How much is left in the S R account for S R three?
More than cover this. Andrew, do you have a balance?
We're several hundred thousand.
Yeah, several several hundred thousand. I can look it up here, like. I need a few minutes.
Yeah, certainly addresses the timing issue we have of getting started on this and not having to wait until after your fall town meeting so we can have that timely uh data for our budgeting conversations.
Dr. Hackett, does it, um, if we paid for it out of our own S R funding, does it change the way we would, um, we would seek an enrollment study if we are asking town meeting for funds, would we be required to follow an R S P process, but um, we could choose an alternative pathway if we're funding it ourselves?
Uh, the well, the procurement would be the same regardless in terms of what what we have to do under the law. Uh, because it doesn't really matter what where the funds would come from. Um, Andrew, I don't know if you want to speak to just, I believe, I know that there are some enrollment um, companies that would do enrollment studies that are on the state bid list, but I believe this is a three quote if we're under how much money?
Uh, yeah, under a hundred grand now is for schools to get three quotes. And I'll add the S R three, three is like a four hundred and seventy grand balance in there.
But if it's under twenty five, we can just go direct with no other quotes. Isn't that right?
No, uh, over ten K requires three quotes.
Over ten K, okay.
And then we can also look at if there's a partner or state contracts, but I haven't seen anything with enrollment groups or consultants.
And if, okay, and if, but if we're if we're clear about what it is we're looking for. Um, and there's only one sort of response.
So it doesn't change our price.
Right.
If if we're if we're clear what we're looking for, and let's say we get three or four bids, and only one of them is actually responsive, then we can still select that bid, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So what I what I was just going to offer is the last time we did this with UMass Donahue Institute. Um, it was a very, very modest amount of money. Um, and we actually, I don't believe we went out with an RFP. Um, I believe we engaged with them directly. Um, and I would be I I I would be actually, I would be shocked if this was something that started with anything other than a one or a two. Um, it'd be great if, you know, it was so modest that we could just contract with anyone directly, but we'd have to have some conversations.
I think it was more than ten last time, though, Mr. Nixon. So it sounds like we need at least three bids if it's more than ten.
Yeah, I my memory is it was in the teens last time, yeah.
Yeah, mine is it was eighteen.
So I think to the point, um, we can, we we'll look to utilize other funding. We won't bring this to fall town meeting. I think we have a have to have a further conversation about what is it that we are looking for. Administration will will kind of work on that and uh, put some put some points together and we can bring that back to the committee for discussion so that you can have a chance to weigh in on that, regardless of what the procurement would look like.
That sounds sounds reasonable and 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 in particular, if um, you know, since we have the benefit of of uh acting quicker by not going through town meeting, um, you know, if we can discuss that, you know, at a um, you know, a fairly soon um, meeting coming up, that would be great. Um, so we don't need a vote, um, but if we're not, if we have consensus that we're not trying to put this on the warrant. So um, does everyone generally agree in this direction? We'll look internally for money. I see nodding heads. So there's no one.
Yes, Mr. Hopcroft.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, you know, the next item here, um, you know, is the the um the the facilities planning. Um, and Dr. Hackett, do you want to give your recommendation on this one as well?
Sure. So this has been part of your discussion, and I'm really kind of, I've been reflecting on it. I've had an opportunity to talk to a couple of you kind of offline about this as well. Um, and some of the discussion we had at the workshop, for example, was was in and around the timing of this. As you recall, we had considered, um, well, we had considered doing enrollment study last spring, moved away from that. I think this is the right timing on the enrollment study for the fall. Um, generally, uh, it would, it's helpful to have an enrollment study done before you go into master facilities planning. And I think that as I make note of, I I think that the committee uh, needs to really have a further conversation about what your vision is for our facilities and our program because the the facilities plan is going to react to what you think programmatically, what we believe programmatically, where we're going. Uh, it's we we have all the all the information. We have you know, tons of information on the actual facilities themselves, where footage, capacity, that that works done. Uh, but I think that over the next couple of months or three or four months, uh, for us to for you to engage in a discussion about what is it that we're going to do when we move into Lynch, um, how what what's the effect of uh, what's the effect on Parkhurst, we talk about Morocco, uh, even, you know, V O was even brought up the other night, just as an example, if, you know, we do have some expansion capabilities. So once we know what our enrollment um is going to look like, I think that that will help help guide our discussion. Um, and I would just recommend that we that we hold on that, that you hold on that, and um, we maybe reconsider it for spring town meeting.
Do you have any um, a discussion otherwise? Because we can just do a consensus again if this is the direction the committee wants to move in without voting.
I like the idea of decoupling them or uncoupling them so that we can think through them systematically.
Great, thanks, Ms. Bollnase. Ms. Bergstrom?
Um, am I, can you hear me, Mr. Hopcroft?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Um, I think we've already uncoupled them, Ms. Bollnase, by paying for the enrollment study ourselves. Um, I think that if we wanted to go forward in November, the money would not be available to us until after that. And after these discussions are had, if we're going to move forward more quickly with the enrollment study. Um, I think that there are some other factors in our timeline that are happening in and around and outside of school committee that um, we're driving my desire to have this on the fall town meeting warrant, including um, the C P A process that's ongoing, that um, I attended the first meeting the other night, and they are looking for um, specifics that are more updated around our facilities than our current master plan provides. Um, all that being said, if if we um, as a committee, want to wait until spring town meeting, I'm happy to do that, but understanding that that may it may be some lost opportunity for us in in terms of some other things that are going on in town around capital planning and the C P A.
So, um, Ms. Bergstrom, if I can just make sure that I understand that um, you you're talking a lot about just the timing of the funding being available. If we do, if we self-fund the enrollment study, um, we can get that started before fall town meeting, and and your concern is the gap between the end of that um, study and when money that would be appropriated after spring town meeting becomes available, the the lost opportunity in that window, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brady?
Uh, I think either way certainly works for me. I appreciate Michelle's points. I think for me, what's most important is we do continue the conversation about our facilities and we do it, you know, at one of our meetings in October or November. I don't think we've had enough time to discuss it as a committee. I hear different committee members saying different things um, about locations of where future schools might be built, and we really haven't had those discussions or any kind of consensus on them. So I'd like us at least to have a thorough discussion of what everyone is thinking as far as facilities for the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. So I I just appreciate that being on a agenda sooner rather than later.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Ms. Bollnase?
Um, I was just going to say, I think it's important for us, just as Mr. Brady was saying, I think it's important to continue that conversation um, before we make this decision on whatever it is that we want to bring back to spring town meeting, if we would like to have funding, request funding at that time for a new master facilities plan. But I I absolutely agree that the discussion is important right now.
Uh, Mr. Nixon?
Yeah, I'm I'm in support of putting this off a little bit. Um, I would just in response to Mr. Brady's point um, and Dr. Hackett's comment about program decisions. So you know, the master plan we have today actually identifies the Mystic School site and says we're not going to surplus that building. Because if we were going to build a sixth neighborhood elementary school, that's where it would go. But that recommendation came from frankly, kind of an ideological approach and a programming decision that said in Winchester, we love our neighborhood elementary schools, and we don't want them to grow, go beyond a certain size. That's exactly the kind of thing we should sort of talk about and reaffirm because if the pendulum swung the other way, then we said, you know, for whatever reason, um, we we wanted to kind of gravitate towards having four elementary schools. That would be a very interesting charge for the master plan because obviously we have five. Um, and and with respect to, you know, Parkhurst, we've kicked around at our last meeting that idea of the early childhood education center. Um, that's a conversation we should have since we're building a new Lynch with an expanded preschool. So you know, a master plan is basically just going to respond to whatever our kind of program priorities are. And then the last point I would just make is that that the last master plan we did, we even when we went looking for funding, we had mapped out kind of a participation process and engagement process with E F P B C, FinCom Planning Board and others. Typically, the E F P B C would actually run the master plan. Um, last round was a bit of an exception because we were in the middle of a phased three-year project at the high school. Um, but we still had, I think, five E F P B C members as a part of it. So I think it's good to give ourselves a little bit of time to have the conversations that we just talked about. But also begin to talk about like what that process would look like, what kind of engagement we would be looking for. Uh, not to make you nervous, Dr. Hackett, but just like we talked about the superintendent search, right? People care about who their superintendent is, and people care about the buildings in town. And so we should have a conversation about what that process looks like as well, so that when we're asking for money, people really feel like it's kind of a group effort. But I'm I'm in support of waiting.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. And I'm cognizant that it's about five twenty nine, so I'll move in quickly, Ms. Bergstrom?
Um, and I just, I I'm going to be the school committee historian tonight, and I just want to let the committee know that the last time we went forward for master plan funding, it took us almost two years to get the funding. It took three bites at the apple from town meeting. So um, my concern of waiting to spring and waiting to start that discussion that we may need this in the future by putting a warrant article forward in the fall is that that may not happen for a year and a half, and I appreciate that we can continue to have these conversations while we're also requesting funding. So none of the things anybody has said here tonight precludes having conversations, engaging community members while also requesting funding. Um, our first, our first attempt at getting funding for a master plan failed. We went back and asked for one amount, that amount was not enough. We had to go back and ask for a second amount the last time we did this. So I don't expect this time for it necessarily to go any differently. Um, and it never hurts to have funding available when you're ready to use it.
Yeah, so if folks are are um uh, done with their questions, put your hands down because I can't tell if you're asking new questions or not. But um, uh, I'll say that, you know, just from my perspective as a member, um, you know, I share Mr. Brady's um, sense of urgency with the the new Lynch building just around the corner. You know, in twenty twenty five, uh, there there's a lot of, you know, moving parts here, and and I think uh, whatever we do tonight, um, you know, I I think having this conversation soon would be a very um, uh, good thing to do. Um, I also think that um, with regard to um uh, funding requests failing um, and having to be updated in terms of the scope, um, you know, there is some benefit to um, having the conversation first and um, having a a better ask for town meeting that's that that um it has a better sense of what we're looking for and maybe more detail around what's actually needed. Um, I I don't know for certain if that would um, affect the the success rate in town meeting, but uh, the hope that in my mind, anyway, I I'm comfortable, by the way, with either path. I'm comfortable with a warrant on now for the reasons Ms. Bergstrom stated. Um, but I'm also comfortable spending a little bit of time um, really thinking it through and building a case and and um, and putting it on so long as we, you know, uh, are committed to having this conversation soon because I feel the pressure of of um, you know, just the new Lynch opening and things just being different and wanting to um, have this resolved soon. Uh, Mr. Brady? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Bergstrom, your hand is still up. Are you except from before or is that?
It's showing that it's down on my screen, so.
It just went down. Mr. Mr. Brady, you're up.
Thank you. Uh, I mean, I think just listening to you and and listening to Michelle, I mean, I'm I'm happy to be supportive tonight of you know, putting this warrant article on because I I appreciate the points and I I don't think, I can't really think of anything we lose by trying to do this sooner rather than later, but to Michelle's point, we could lose by waiting, so um, I'd be happy to support it tonight.
Can I make a counterpoint, Mr. Chair?
Um, uh, Ms. Bollnase has her hand up if it's directly related.
Sorry, it it is directly related. So the reason that that the reason we had to go back and ask for funding a second time is because we didn't really have as clear an understanding of scope as we really needed. I feel like this runway is too short. So the the motion uh, the the motion is due on October thirteenth, and we haven't even yet talked about what the scope would be for a master plan, and that directly impacts what it's going to cost. And so I don't feel like there's time to even reach out to some of the consultants that would help us to really get a good sense of what it is we're asking for and how much it would cost. And and I think we actually, I would actually hope we would not repeat what happened last time, but there there was a lot of interest and a lot of pressure to do it, but we just didn't really have all our ducks in a row. So I would be more comfortable wait, but waiting until the spring doesn't mean we're not having the conversations that you talked about. We could start having conversations with master planning teams, you know, next month. Um, but 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 again, we need to have some of those program discussions that Dr. Hackett mentioned. That could really wildly affect sort of the scope of what we're doing in a master plan.
Ms. Bollnase, thank you for allowing me to bump us one ahead of you. Uh, it's Europe.
Yes, somebody, Mr. Nixon, you jumped ahead of me.
And Mr. Brady, take down your hand.
I would also say wait for better. I would just say I think we should wait for better information, and then we can go forward with a better proposal in the spring. Um, a better, tighter proposal. Um, and that doesn't preclude having discussions right now about our facilities and being able to take forward to um whoever might be coming forward. Um, but just better information about what we want.
And I'm happy to do that, but Mr. Nixon also left out that the first time they asked for the eighty five thousand dollars, they were also turned down. So they went back three times. So it was not just about scope, it was about cost as well.
And I am merely saying, let's have better information and a better and a solid proposal that we can all get behind.
Dr. Hackett, uh, for those of us who are comfortable with either path, um, your your preference is to um uh, is to have these discussions first and go at spring town meeting, is that correct?
Yeah, yes, because of the reasons that Ms. Bollnase and Mr. Nixon just articulated. I think that um, you know, if we go to fall fall town meeting and ask for to funds for our facilities, master facilities plan, I think the question, logical question from town meeting members is going to be what what are you looking to do? Um, and I don't know that we have the runway to be able to kind of develop that vision about how we're thinking about different facilities because we truly you know, this, in my view, is kind of a two-year look forward. Um, once Lynch opens, uh, you know, there will be some decisions that are going to have to get made. Uh, and even prior to that, we we need to, you know, um, continue the discussion on on Morocco, and I think that the enrollment study will give us the information we need, I believe, um, to have a full discussion on all those things, but I um, I'm just not sure what you would say to answer the question of why do you want, you know, a hundred thousand dollars for a master facilities plan, but clearly, you know, uh, I work at the pleasure of the committee, and um, I would, I can understand both sides.
Yeah, I think I think from my personal perspective, you know, the um, I feel urgency to get this moving. Uh, and I understand that we, you know, we want to have a um, a well-thought-out case, and so um personally, I think I I would lean towards, as much as I'd like to, I'd like to do it right now for fall town meeting. I just don't know that we'll have um you know, that we'll be ready for it uh, at that point. So but I'd like to, if we do wait um, to to, you know, let's prioritize it and um uh, you know, make sure to to be ahead of the game as we're as we're moving through and and um, you know, have these conversations early on. So I'll commit to to doing that if others agree. Do we have a, so do we, do we want to take a formal, do we have a consensus on on this? I know, um, this works from Mr. Brady, I think we're we're in the other way. How do we? Well, I guess, I guess, if if if. Well, I guess, I guess, if, if, if.
By saying I would be good with wherever the committee lands tonight. I just wanna be really clear that we may not get it in spring and that this may be delaying us by a full year to a year and a half in doing this process, which is going to leave our facilities out of queue for C P A planning and any capital planning um overrides that are gonna be happening, because we will not have current information to be able to give them on cost and scope of work that we're interested in doing.
Okay, just as a clarification on that, uh, would this not only push us out six months?
Not if we don't get the money in April or in May, Mister Hopcraft.
But, but if we assume that it's gonna take, if we assume that, that our likelihood is the same going now or later, which is questionable whether it, it improves by waiting, but if we assume it's the same, and it takes three cycles or two cycles or whatever, um, it would only push us out one cycle, right?
We wouldn't be able to begin till next summer.
Right, six, six months later than that, okay. Um, Mister Brady.
I was just gonna say, I mean, I, again, I, I feel having heard a lot of different viewpoints, I'm supportive of us trying to go forward. I think we have a lot of smart, capable people who can get things done, especially if we give ourselves a sense of urgency. So at this point, I would make a motion and we can find out whether we wanna support it or not, and then we'll move on and we'll make the decision. Cause it's a, it's a robust topic. We could talk about it for hours and have a great discussion, but I don't think we have hours to talk about it right now. So that's one way to kind of put it to bed is I can make a motion, and if no one seconds it, we're done and we know. So I'll make a motion to support this article as stated. I just did. So if it dies, it dies, and that's that.
Mi, I can I, Mister Hopcraft, uh, would you, you were trying to say something too. Thanks, Mister Brady.
I actually just had a clarifying question, which, which, um, you know, I appreciate, Mister Brady, if you don't mind me asking a clarifying question, it might help um, with your motion.
Yeah, please.
Okay, um, Miss Bergstrom, you had mentioned a couple um, uh, time-sensitive items for which you wanted to have this done. I, and I was just wondering if you could clarify what those were. I think you talked about it. I don't know if it was an override or, or other things, is it? Um, are there other things on the town calendar that we should be aware of besides generally Lynch opening and, and things?
So there have been some ge, there have been some general discussions at this out looking towards both an operating override and a capital override in the next couple of years coming forward. And um, there is also a committee moving forward from the Select Board on the Community Preservation Act. And part of the Community Preservation Act is about historic buildings, of which we have several in um, that are owned by the school department or managed by the school department. Um, the data that we have on those and the cost analysis in the current master plan is very out of date. It does not cover current construction costs or maintenance costs or anything that has happened with the economy since the pandemic. Um, we also have, as Doctor Hackett mentioned, Lynch School opening, and we also know that we have a sense of urgency around Morocco. So um, figuring out how we fit into all the other plans that are swirling around in town government. Um, I, I would just like to be able to go forward with a um, school committee and district vision and plan for our own buildings before someone else develops one for us.
All right. Uh, Mister Brady, do you want to restate your motion?
Sure, I'm sorry, I can't see the screen. So my, my motion is to um, approve the article as it was written and what was sent to us at, I guess it was three o'clock, and I, I believe we're displaying it right now, but if you're not displaying it, what was in the written document uh, for our committee, that's the motion I'm making. And if someone needs to read it, if um, they could read it, I can't see it, but that's my motion.
Yeah, it says, um, uh, see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money for the cost of preparing an update to the twenty seventeen Winchester Public School Master Facilities Plan. Uh, said appropriations shall be made from free cash or any other available funds, or take any other action in relation thereto. And further, the school committee be authorized to have oversight of the projects in accordance with section four dash two of the Winchester Home Rule Charter, the town uh manager will have the authority to enter into contracts and approve payments. No contracts may be signed or payments made without approval, I've said committee uh, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Thank you. So yes, that, that would be the motion I'm making.
Do we have a second? Uh, here in a second.
Perfect, then we're all set.
All right. Thank you, Mister Brady. Um, all right, so um, thank you. That, that resolves the consensus is to um, have a further discussion and um, and, and I believe that we have consensus and, and, and maybe we can get a knot of heads that we do feel urgency with moving this forward and um, you know, having the discussion so that we're in a position to have the information to put this forward in the spring. Is that generally right? Yeah, okay, great. Um, all right, so I, I believe our final item is um, uh, the Winchester um, building and uh, testing um, and engineering um, that we've discussed in the past. Um, and and Doctor Hackett, I believe your recommendation was to uh, revisit this when more um, information was available. This was an E F P B C um, warrant article, and so we could at a later date recommend favorable action, I believe, on that. Is that right?
Yes. And uh, there's, there's not, you know, the information isn't in yet, so there's a lot of um, there's a lot more to come. Uh, E F P B C did vote to put this on a warrant, understanding that, that it'll be a couple of weeks before we really know what the, what the scope might look like. Um, so I, yeah, I think it, um, certainly I know that you're supportive of, of dealing with any kind of um, floor issues um, that are going on at the high school. And I think, uh, just having you, you, I would think you would wanna have all the information before you take any action at all.
Can I add something to that, Mister Chair?
Yes.
So there, there is a detailed report that we are expecting within the next week or two. Um, the E F P B C Chair and I, we, we have had a meeting with the project engineer from S G H. All of their forensic analysis at the high school is complete. They took many samples, did a lot of sounding, took physical samples, did tests in the lab. And they have determined conclusively, there are actually two modes of failure going on with uh, the concrete at the high school. Um, they know from a chemical point of view what's causing it. Um, so, but, but they now have some work to do to actually come up with an engineering package that both repairs the concrete and then addresses what those two sort of modes of failure are, when one is carbonation through excessive C O two, and another is actually chlorides, which are salts. And so it's very curious to us that that we're getting two very different results in, in different places of the building. So a lot of work has been done. Um, and it's helpful to know what the root cause is. And so now this engineer needs to frankly get started to not only you know, mechanically remove any other loose concrete, and there is some that could do some damage, um, not to people, but you know, systems and crawl spaces. Um, and then get started on that remediation plan, um, which could involve many different things. I mean, it can involve some air movement, it can involve a vapor barrier, it could involve you know, many, many different options, uh, but we'd like to get them started. So um, I, I'm, I'm disappointed we don't have the report yet. Um, I've seen elements of it, and I think it's, it's very detailed and will be very interesting to everyone. Um, but uh, that just sort of speaks to the urgency, and I think when that report comes out, uh, it'll be shared with the school committee as well, um, as the Select Board.
Great. Uh, well, thank you. Um, all right, so uh, uh, it's, I, I think that we have consensus on, on this one, that we're not, um, there's no action for us to take here. Um, I believe that is the last item. Um, and so, uh, unless there's anything else, Doctor Hackett, you know, I would, I would uh, thank everyone for making the time tonight for us to review uh, and um, vote on the, the warrant articles prior to the deadline. Um, and uh, and with that, you know, I'd wish everyone.
Can you just confirm our next meeting date and time?
Yeah, I believe it's uh, Tuesday. On the calendar, the twenty-sixth at uh, six P M at the high school. Does that sound right to everyone?
Yep, that's correct.
That's from memory, so uh, I'm glad that.
You got it. Uh, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, uh, Ms. Bull, I say. Okay, I'll take that as a yes. Uh, Mister Nixon.
Hi.
Mister Brady.
Hi.
Chair votes aye, uh, meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Enjoy your night with your kids.